All the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council meeting today's October 8th, 2024. We're in the community center tonight and all five council are present, four in person, and Doug Swales is on Zoom. First of all, I'm going to open the public hearing. Open the public hearing on proposed amendment to the city zoning ordinance number 79 in various particulars as recommended by the zoning commission and city staff. Would anyone like to speak during the public hearing, either on Zoom or in the room? Sheila, would you like to speak? I think she's on mute.
I'm on mute, but I just came off and no, nothing to say right now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Sheila. Did you want anything, Pat? Did you get any correspondence, Mike?
Did not.
Well, the council got some correspondence from Mike about
Mike Ritchie.
Mike Ritchie?
Yes.
Okay, right. Okay, very good. So, okay, close the public hearing. Then first order of business is approval of minutes for September 10th, 2024. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing nine minutes approved by unanimous consent. Okay, now we'll go to public input, and I know we have Tom Seelik is here. Welcome, Tom. Yeah, and Ryan.
Yep, my name is Tom Seelik. I work at West Bank. Senior vice president there. I've been there 20 years and way back in the days, I was a lawyer, a real lawyer for about 14 years. And during Hills Bank, I've been at West Bank 20 years. Why are we here? Well, we want you to do all your banking with us. So how do we start this? We very come to the council and try to churn. So that's what we're doing. You know, tell you the story, West Bank is a bank headquartered in Des Moines, but our bank, our bank's in Corvilles. I call it a business bank, but we do read commercials. We just want to introduce ourselves and sort of say, as things go along here, we'd like the opportunity to make proposals or do some banking.
Yeah, just like Tom said, we're headquartered in Des Moines. We have an office in Iowa City. We purchased Hawkeye State Bank, which might be familiar to some of you guys back in 2003. So that is kind of how we got to Iowa City area. We have offices in Des Moines, and then we also have offices kind of outside the Twin Cities and Rochester, Mancato, in that area as well. But we have a lot of experience with working with municipalities and cities. City of Portland, City of Iowa City for sure is two of our larger customers. We just, we haven't had a relationship with you guys in the past. We'd love to start that. We know that that takes time. It's not something that's happened, right? So we met with Louise and thanks for inviting us here. And just kind of wanted to introduce ourselves and just kind of let you know that we're open for business if things come up, you know, money is CDs come up or looking to get a little bit better rates on any sorts of accounts. We'd love for you guys to reach out to us. I think right now we're very competitive on the deposit side. And so we just love any opportunity that you guys have and hopefully all the time. You guys can get to know us a little better and we can show you that we are a good banking partner, so.
I was going to say, it's been around for 100 years?
Yeah, I think it was 1890. So it's one of the oldest businesses in Des Moines. So banks have been around a long time. Like I said, we've been in Iowa City for 20 years.
Oh, you got cards?
Yeah.
Business cards?
We're in San Francisco. Might as well. But yeah, we've been around here for 20 years. We have a lot of experience with municipalities. We don't have any business with you guys and
I got a card. I want to waste your card. Thank you.
Hey, Tom. Feel free to reach out.
Engineer. Counselor. They vote, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, glad to be here. We'll come back anytime.
Okay.
We won't take up much of your meetings.
Thanks for staying. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
Not exciting.
Okay. Oh, I don't know. Yeah. Okay. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Pat or Sheila? Do you have anything you'd like to say in public input? Okay. We'll go on to mayor's report, and first thing is consideration of resolution 2435, approving Troy Kelsey as city administrator and authorizing the mayor to sign in the city clerk to attest to an employment agreement. And Steph and I met. Steph's going to give the report.
Yeah, we met and interviewed the sole applicant Troy Kelsey for the position of city administrator. And we recommend 100% that he be hired on in November. I'd like to make a motion. Is that okay? Do you start that now?
Yes.
All motion, resolution 2435, appointing Troy Kelsey as city administrator and authorizing the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest to an employment agreement.
Okay, motion by Steph. Is there a second? Second by Nick. Discussion. All in favor? Oh, it's a resolution. Roll call vote.
Excuse me, Gunn?
Aye.
Herbl?
Aye.
Moore? Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. That's, can't hardly wait for him to start, November 1st. Okay, so we'll go on to city attorney report. Wrote quite a good legal report, so we know everything going on. So did you want to talk about the city ordinances and municipal infractions?
Sure. Yeah, I tried to explain most everything in my report. Happy to take questions. This is kind of an easy one, or at least for me, it's one that's overdue. As I said in my report, you know, the history is that in Iowa, traditionally municipalities, cities, you know, were permitted to have ordinances to regulate conduct, you know, laws. And they could enforce those laws through what's called a simple misdemeanor prosecution, which is a criminal offense. It's the lowest level criminal offense, but it is that. And as things evolved, you know, when people were being cited for housing code violations or zoning ordinance violations and various other things in municipal governments, it seemed a little, I don't know what the right word is, heavy-handed or, you know, out of place that, well, why is this a crime? You know, well, that's all the cities could do. So the legislature permits cities to enforce those sorts of violations by way of what's called a municipal infraction, which is a different process. Legally, it's got some differences, a different burden of proof. It's not a crime, doesn't go on anybody's record. It's easier to enforce. It's, I think it's easier for the court system because you don't have a judge saying, why is this being prosecuted as a crime? Et cetera. Lots of our more recent ordinances do provide for enforcement by way of a municipal infraction when we adopted them. What this ordinance does is it just sort of cleans up our other ordinances. It says, you know, everything except certain things that are listed in my report and in the ordinance can be enforced by way of a municipal infraction. You know, I think that, well, I know that city staff, police, police don't want to be citing people for crimes that don't really feel like crimes. Brian and Terry, housing official, building official, would like to, you know, be able to enforce things by municipal infraction, certainly in their full-time jobs in Iowa City. That's how they enforce things. So everybody is used to that process, and this, as I said, just sort of squares us up with what, with, I would say, where things are now. And that's the summary of the ordinance.
Okay. Why don't we get a motion on the table for first consideration? Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa? Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Herbl?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
First consideration passes 5-0.
Thank you. So we'll go to your report.
Okay. I don't have anything other than my written report this month, so.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go on to city treasurer. And you sent a report and your warrants.
I did. And thank you, Mayor. And the only thing to add is a Visa bill for $842.65 for the normal Google suite, car wash, you know, the stuff that's
A Visa bill. Okay. Are there any questions for John? So John sent the warrants Monday, I believe, way early. And the only addition is the Visa bill. Is there any other additions? Okay, or is there any objection to payment? Hearing none, the warrants are paid by unanimous consent. Thank you. And then we'll go on to, we'll start with finance. And Nick, did you want Steve to go first? Okay, very good.
Okay, I'll go first. Okay, let's see. First item on the list here, discussion of revenue from local option sales tax. Most of this discussion is going to focus on the older loss that we had from 2009 through 12. So 12 to whatever, 15 years ago. The council made a decision at that time that that money would be spent basically for any, whatever that legal term is, any legal purpose. Okay. So over the four-year period, the city collected just a little over a half million dollars from that lost money. And during that time and a little bit after, we had two larger capital projects. There was Melrose project. I think that was like the sidewalk improvements and stuff.
Oh, yeah, it was the white sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
Because that was in 10, I believe.
Yeah, and then there was also the Sunset Street.
Yes.
So both of those projects, you know, whatever the cost was, there was highway, street highway money to offset some of that cost of those projects. The remainder had to be picked up by the city, and that totaled somewhere, I don't have an exact number, $325,000 or something like that, $340,000. That was used to pay for the balance of those two contracts, and that's where we were left with $177,000 left over. Well, back, back 15 years ago, the city finances were a lot different, you know, as far as funding projects and stuff. At that time, the local option money was about the, was about the only thing that could, that we had available to use for match money for those projects. And so that's how it was done. Well, fast forward to today. And we've got bigger capital projects coming up, but the big difference is we have multiple funding sources that we could use to help fund that. Being from time to time, we could use some road use tax money. We could use some of the new local option sales tax money. Hotel motel tax money. Right now, we're using that money to pay both 2022 A and B bonds. And then I think that was pretty much it, what we had. But anyway, we have multiple sources to pick from when we go forward, especially with the big Melrose project. So we have a good base amount coming in, which in the long term will be them's here. We, the objective basically is to keep using those funds as much as possible. So when those projects are all done, the cost to the taxpayers at the lowest level that we can possibly make it. Otherwise, if we didn't have these sources of income, we had to sell these bonds to pay for these large projects. They're going to be levied against the properties in town. So dynamics of everything in the city have, from a financial standpoint, have changed an awful lot. So we're all familiar, the last couple of years have been pretty tough, you know, with restrictions on, you know, how much we can increase the property tax revenue per year. Last year, we only got a 1.07% increase in property tax dollars. Of course, the cost of everything else was going up anywhere from three to six and a half percent. So we were, we lost a lot of ground there. And few other factors have come along. Well, anyway, now where we're sitting at right now, basically from this tight spot that we've gone through, we've gone through a portion of the city's reserve money. And until this new local option sales tax kicks in, we're still going to have some kind of a deficit situation that needs to be funded. So anyway, I've talked to Nick about this. I've talked to Louise about it. There are possibility that what we could do is that that leftover old lost money is basically, has functioned as the cash reserve over the, you know, especially over the most recent years. And so because of the deficit funding we're going to be going through in short term, I've talked to Nick and Louise about the possibility of basically making a decision to use that leftover old lost money to fund everything going forward to keep us on solid ground until we get a full year of new local option sales tax and, you know, we'll have some revenue. Half of that we can use for city operations. The other half will have to go to tax relief, property tax relief. And basically what that is, is pay more, you know, any additional bonds, pay, pay that. So taxpayers aren't stuck with paying the whole thing. So so that's basically what I've talked to both of you about within the last week. As, I mean, it doesn't involve really anything. It's just changing the nature of the general fund class balance. Right now, it's in committed because it was committed until the decision was made. And now we can just put it in the general operating part of the general fund and go forward from there. So so that's just, you know, basically history of it and where we're at.
So I'd make a motion. This is a good time for that. I would make a motion to authorize the release of the remaining unspent amount of prior local option sales and services tax funds on a hand in the city's accounts, which totals $177,769 as of June 30, 2024.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Steph. Discussion.
I would just reiterate, as Steve explained, the city's cash reserve funds have been depleted due to conditions and changes from various factors over the past few recent years. And that the replenishment will allow us to basically operate without deficit problems. And I think I have to be clear, the effective date of the release of funds would be the June 30th, 2024. Right, Steve? I don't know that that needs to be in the motion, but I think that's, I mean, I said the date as of June 30th, 2024. So I think that's implied. Is that right?
Okay, any questions? Okay, this is a simple motion. So here's, we're all in favor, say aye.
This is a resolution 37.
Okay.
Doug, do you say aye?
Yes, yes, I do. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Okay. Thank you. So we're going to go on to a resolution 2437, authorizing and confirming fund transfers. We do this every year. And you're going to talk about that?
Yeah.
Now, Steve?
Yeah. It's required, it's been required for about three or four years now that transfers have to be documented as to the purpose and then also approved by city council. The three transfers that we have. The first one is actually, it's a combination of the December and June semi-annual approvals that we already did to authorize debt service money to pay for the principal and interest on bonds. So that was just a total of those, which is basically reconfirming that again. The second one, that was a transfer from the general fund to the employee benefits fund. And what that is basically is it's a backfill. We budget, on the budget, we budget the payroll taxes for base salary of everybody. And then we have a nominal amount of police overtime billed in, and that's what we levy for. Because the contract services, you know, traffic services and stuff for football games and stuff that we collect money on that can fluctuate from year to year. We do not levy for the payroll taxes on that. However, the charge to, like, University of Iowa or whoever, that charge is high enough to cover both the officer salaries and their payroll taxes. And that gets collected in the general fund, but the tax is paid out of special revenue account. So we're just transferring that money back over. So that's the purpose of that one. And the last one, that is the annual mandatory 5% setting aside of the TIF receipts into the TIF capital reserve for future use for TIF projects.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion for resolution 2437?
No motion.
Motion by Steph. Is there a second? Tim? Okay, discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Herbl?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Now we have 2438, and this is the urban renewal report.
Okay. Actually, all three of these following resolutions concern the annual report that we have to file with state of Iowa. Just before I go over them, we got this process started early, right away, June. We've been working with John an awful lot over the last three months. He's actually been doing most of the input on the reports and everything. It's been going very well. Hopefully, hopefully it hasn't been too confusing for as much information as there is.
No, I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions and help sort things out mine so I could settle and how it makes sense. Because it's a different type of accounting than most people are accustomed to.
But anyway, we've been working hard at it, partly because this is part of, you know, transitioning my work over to John. And also I wanted to get this done before November because it always seems that to meet the December 1st deadline for not so much these first two reports, but the annual financial report needs to be published in the newspaper. And we've been fighting too much with publication time around Christmas or the Thanksgiving time, which is when they also run a lot of advertising for Christmas and stuff. So it's been kind of a battle, you know, travel around Thanksgiving holiday. So we pushed hard to get this done a month early. And so here we are. So anyway. First one we'll go through, this is just the annual urban renewal report. This is on the OUP Urban Renewal District. Everything's summarized on the first page here. We started the year with a balance of $611,000, and that amount was paid last July to Jeff Maxwell for the fiscal '23 installment. We took in a little over $663,000 of TIF this year. And then down in the expenditures, the non-rebate expenditure, the $33,190, that's the 5% transfer to the TIF reserve. So the rebate expenditures, $1,242,000, that was both the July of '23 and the June of '24, payments to Maxwell on their developer contract. And that leaves us with a cash balance of zero at June 30th, which is where we're at every year. And then the bottom line, total year-end outstanding TIF obligations, just a little over $3 million. That must, all but just a very small amount of that was the amount owed on the developer contract. So based on what we've been paying, we should have this paid off in five years.
Any questions for Steve? We have a resolution 2438 for you. Is there a motion? Motion by Nick. Is there a second? Second by Lisa. Discussion. Hey, roll call vote.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Herbl?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll go on to the annual street financial report.
Okay. The street finance report is, we file that with the Iowa Department of Transportation. The first page on the PDF is the expenses, recap of the expenses in the road use tax fund. We had, for the first line item, other maintenance and repairs. These were a couple of smaller capital projects or repair projects. They told a little over $25,000. The second line, street maintenance expense, $12,000, that was the striping. The third line, street capacity improvement, that $388,000, that was the amount spent on four capital projects this last year. Then we have principal and interest payments. That is only on the bonds or the portion of the bonds that pertain to street projects. Transfers out, that's money that, revenues that were transferred to debt service. The rest of the expenses are self-explanatory, street lighting, traffic control, snow removal, $63,000. That was kind of interesting because back in January, for those two blizzards, the total cost of that was something like $57,000 or $58,000 just for that. So we lucked out on having to pay about $5,000 more for the rest of the winter. And this $63,000 was almost the same as the year before. So fingers crossed going forward this year. Engineering fees, that's, engineering fees for various, numerous city things, street sidewalk things going on, and then streets sweeping. Next page on revenues, main revenues here, on second line, we use $103,000 of hotel motel tax to pay principal and interest on bonds. Third line, road use tax, we took in $173,000 this last year. Then the next to last bottom line, special assessments, we took in just under $48,000. The next page is bonds and loans. This is just the city bonds that pertain to streets. Then we have page five of this, street projects. We have to disclose any, any capital project that was completed during the year that exceeds the public bid threshold, which is somewhere about $75,000 or $95,000.
Like closer to $75,000.
Some, yeah, so.
Or some infrastructure, yeah.
Yeah, so that project was a $120,000 project altogether. So anyway, and then on summary page, at the end of the year, the ending balance, we have $110,000 of road use tax money going forward. Special revenues. That was mostly special assessments. And then we have $332,000 left over from 2022 bonds.
Any questions for Steve? So we have resolution 2439 before the council. Is there a motion? Nick? And a second, Lisa?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Okay, roll call vote.
Gunn?
Aye.
Herbl?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And then we have a resolution 2440 with the annual finance report. And Steve, you sent that, right?
Yeah. Right before I start on this, both the Um, right before I start on this, um, both the road use and the TIF reports. Um, John and I are gonna transmit these tomorrow, so they'll be unfiled with the Department of Management.
Oh.
Transportation. Uh, going forward on the annual financial report, this one has to be published, so we just need to approve it so we can get it published and then we have to file a paper copy.
Okay.
So um, then we'll work on some dates to figure this out, you know, we'll do this. It's it's not the same process as the budget process and kind of work it backwards, so. Um, I'm not gonna go through um most of this report, but I do wanna go down uh just the main uh front page here. This is uh, combined all funds of the city. Uh, the right two columns. Um, column C is total actual where we ended up for the year and then the right hand column budget D, uh, column D, that's our budget. Um, most of these pretty much fell in line altogether. Uh, bottom line, um, we ended up with a nine hundred and thirty six thousand dollar deficit. We were projecting nine hundred and fifty five thousand, so we go way off course. Um, there were a couple of items that I did wanna bring up, um concerning the expenditures. Uh, we had two categories that were the over expenditure was more than a thousand dollars. First is the public safety. We were over guy like seventy thousand. What happened in that was it was not extra expenses that came up uh, with the new police car lease that came in, that payment had to be in their hands on July one. So that check had to been cut in June, even though we have it in this year's budget. So it's just a timing issue on that. Um, and the other item is on the TIF revenues. We took in we took in about twenty eight thousand dollars more than expected uh, based on um now the process we go through. Starts way before the budget year even starts, so we got about twenty eight thousand dollars more, which means they're obligated to have to pay ninety five percent of that out. So when we look at the community and economic development line and the expenses, we ended up at right at just a little over one and a quarter million. Budget amount was one million, two twenty five. So that difference is pretty much the ninety five percent of the extra money that we got, so. So other than the timing issue and one expenditure covered by the revenue here. Nothing really was off track from where we were expecting, expecting to go, so. Anyway, we have uh a little over one and a half million dollars cash going forward this year. And so we've got some cash to fund things, some capital projects going forward for this year, so. I think that was about all I wanted to cover. The rest of the page, uh, the rest of the pages are specific line items, so. If anybody has and everybody didn't solve, try to try to answer them best I can, so.
Any questions? Okay, we have consideration of resolution twenty four forty. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by staff. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, Tim. Roll call vote.
Herbald.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Gunn.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Steve and John, for going through all this. I know you worked a lot of hours on it and thanks so much for doing that and coming tonight and explaining it all. Um. Let's see. Oh, and then after the meeting, we'll get together and get it ready to publish.
Schedule for the publication.
Uh, you know, get it published and then, okay. Very good. Uh, okay, we'll go on to uh wait, Nick had a written report. Did you wanna say anything?
I don't think that.
Okay, he submitted a written report. So, and uh building zoning and sanitation. So this is uh the first consideration of ordinance number two fifty five, amending the zoning ordinance. And so uh Steve explained a lot of it in his report and um anyway, uh, this is first consideration. Why don't you go through a little bit?
I'm happy to. So there's broadly speaking, there's two parts of this ordinance. They are organized in two parts, so bear with me, but but the one part of is the council's um but the the draft ordinance is is my my uh document prepared after the council's direction last month, when the council looked at the zoning recommendations. The recommendations from the zoning commission and said, you know, we're not so sure about the A D U, the the accessory dwelling unit. But we don't want that to stand in the way of these other recommendations from the zoning ordinance. And so um we sort of parked the uh A D U discussion, but you know, the direction to me was go ahead and put together the ordinance that that addresses, uh, you know, things like um you know, the how how much patio you can have in your backyard and whether you could have, you know, the continuation of a of a nonconforming use. If you're just extending, you know, the side of your of your home, uh, no closer to the to the um the uh property line, even if it's in violation of the setback and um, you know, whether if if part of the garage is in the rear setback, the limitation on rear setbacks that apply to the whole garage or just that part. And then uh, uh, adopting uh and establishing a public zone, public and civic zone that the city's city owned property, like the Swisher Track, like Triangle Park will be part of. Those were the four uh places that the the zoning recommendations the council asked to have included, so the language from those uh proposed changes was actually uh presented to the council last month. So there's nothing really new here. It's just kind of repackaged into ordinance two fifty five. All right. That's part one. The second part um relates to some things that the council hasn't considered uh, or discussed, uh, at least not recently. But um, but some issues have arisen, um, you know, in in town, the city staff. Police department, city attorney, uh, housing official, uh, uh, Brian Jensen, uh, building official Terry Gert have have had some discussions based upon some things that have come up. And um, so those discussions have resulted in some additional um proposed changes that are included in this um, in this ordinance. Two fifty five. And before I go through those, uh, I do wanna say that as as Louis said, as the mayor said, this this is first consideration. So as always, of course, the council has, you know, complete reign, free reign to to do what it wants to do. If it doesn't wanna adopt part of this ordinance or if it wants to change it or, you know, completely uh eliminated. A motion to adopt the first reading can be, but can be made, you know, with amendments or you can amend the the ordinance and then move to adopt it. Um, so I wanna be clear about that. Um, if the council wants, you know, to kind of tap the brakes on some of this and talk about it some more, you you can come back at a at another meeting because you have three three readings. There's plenty of opportunity to discuss, modify, clarify, whatever you might wanna do. But what those other parts of the ordinance that come from city staff recommendation does is, first of all, it defines a temporary structure uh, to include like a, you know, um, you know, a trailer, um a camper and an RV, um, you know, uh, because it's, those things aren't really included in the current definition. It also adds a definition of game day, um, because that 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 phrase is already used in our ordinance once. And as it exists, but it's not defined, you know, um, it's just, just the lawyer in me. I suppose you'd kind of think game day. What do you think it means? And I think that the, I think that the court system would pretty much agree with that, but it never hurts to sort of clarify what you mean by game day. Um, and um, and then uh, that ordinance, excuse me, that phrase comes up later in a in a suggest suggested change here. So um, the um, the 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 use, so so what the zoning ordinance does, among other things, it divides the town into certain um districts, you know, R one, single family, R two, multiple family, those kinds of things. And 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 we're adding this this public and civic district. With the, one of, one of the staff suggested changes here says that uh it under the permitted use uh of of uh the R one zone, um it says, I'm gonna just gonna get it right here, that uh, that you can't have, you can't have like a mobile home. You can't locate a mobile home or a trailer home uh, in in the R one zone. Then it also says that other temporary structures. So so at that point, we're talking about, you know, um, like RVs and we're talking about any any building or something that's not permanently affixed to the house, but those uh those can be um they they they're allowed or they're not disallowed, but but that somebody can't, you know, sort of live in them or stay in them except for campers and RVs on game day weekends, right? And and the 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 thought there or the thinking or what I would present to the council is, if the council might wanna say, well, we don't wanna have we don't want people to park RVs on their driveways anyway, but you can't park RVs on um, on yards, okay? That's that's already prohibited and would remain so. But but one distinction or one um item might be, some people might say, well, why would we allow these anyway? You know, I don't really know how many people have RVs or motor motorhome type uh vehicles that they park in in the city. Um, I, you know, I'm I'm guessing if somebody does have that sort of a of a of a use, if they do use uh, park their camper uh in their driveway, that they certainly would probably have something to say about whether they can just have it there parking. Um, but but that may be an issue for the council. Maybe you wanna address whether we should even allow these or not. Maybe you wanna, like I said, tap the brakes and not adopt that part. It's it's just up to the council. But the part that the that is also here says that you can't you can't, if 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 the council says, yeah, you can have a camper, you can park it in your driveway, you can't live it. Okay, uh, it's not just your driveway, you know, if you have, if you had a concrete slab that was permitted by the zoning ordinance, uh, you can't just park an RV there and live there, okay? Uh, and and uh, so that, that's what that clarification, um, what that clarification does. And it and then it does say, except on game day weekends, which again, you know, the council may say, well, why would we let people do it then? You know, that that's, that was a a recommendation, but it's it's hard for me to say it's the council's decision because it's always the council's decision, of course. The um, the the last change that that I think would follow uh in this staff recommendation category uh, is really sort of a belt and suspenders approach to um ordinance two fifty six, which the council adopted first reading of earlier in this meeting about municipal infractions. And and it just sort of cleans up the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance, for the council to change that, there has to be a notice published in the in the press citizen, which we did. And so um, this was sort of an opportunity to say, hey, as long as you publish that notice because you're gonna adopt some things that were recommended by the zoning commission, and there's a few other things you might wanna take a look at. And this would be one of them to say, our current zoning ordinance says that if you violate the zoning ordinance, you can be prosecuted by, again, the simple misdemeanor criminal prosecution and and um what that section of ordinance two fifty five says is no, we're gonna do away with the criminal prosecution and just make a violation of municipal infraction. That's the summary of two fifty five.
So you gave a more specific game day definition.
Yeah.
And anything of that.
Right.
I'm sorry. No, you go ahead.
So uh, you know, uh, you know, time marches on, life marches on. Back in the day, you know, game day, like I said, well, what do you think it means? Well, it means when they're playing football. And um, in in, but then it changes, you know, because it's it's not Saturdays necessarily anymore. But then more recently, it's not just, it's not just football. Uh, I mean, unless you want it to be football. But you know, they had the wrestling meet, they had the women's basketball game, and then they've had at least a couple of concerts. And um, you know, there've been special events. Um, what I would call more one time events, even though they happen more than once, but like Red Brat, right? Red Brat's coming to town, it's a community event, it's a statewide event, council has adopted some temporary uh measures, you know, resolution because they have so much notice to to uh allow for some some things that wouldn't be allowed normally. The the way that that uh we define game day would would be to include any what what we call public event, so any public event at Kinnick Stadium. So if somebody's having a private party at the press box, that's not a public event. But if if the if the university is hosting or allowing someone to put on a concert or a women's basketball game or wrestling meet or whatever, that would be, that would fall under the definition of game day under under this um under this uh, uh, suggest change. And and for the third time, you know, that's obviously the the council's prerogative. I you know, like, I I don't, I don't know how y'all feel about it. It's I guess I have my thoughts, but I'll probably should probably ought to keep it in the way. So basketball wrestling meets, you know, okay, concerts, you know, I I remember when they, I can't remember what that first concert was. I don't think they've had very many, and I I kind of wondered if they were, they were gonna start doing that. Guess from my standpoint as a consumer, it doesn't really look like the university's getting headlong into hosting, you know, rock and roll shows at Kinnick. Um.
It's a lot of work, I think, to bring the stage in, right?
I think.
Trains, it's not set up the
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I I I don't know. I mean, I think the last one I remember having was was that country. Yeah, I think it was a pretty good success, but maybe I think people want, but you know, like I said, I don't, I don't hear much about any uh impetus to host those things. I certainly haven't seen any anymore. So thank you for reminding me to clarify that 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 is a suggested change.
That would also include like when there, you do like bike rides through Kinnick and stuff like that, and those are open to the public.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, you know, what we're talking about is is whether you could, you know, park on yards and and that sort of thing, so. But yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess you you probably would.
Seems like that definition should be tightened up because there's a lot of, there's the park walk, there's spring game, there's they use these to host a part of gold event, all those are open to the public. And that you could easily have thirty, forty days where you can live in that camper a year.
Well, I guess we're gonna talk about it. I I would rather just leave game day to be own football, football season games and continue the way we've been doing it by resolution because we don't see the future sadly or mercifully. And I think you don't have to look too far to think, how come the council years ago didn't then to do something? So I I, that's what I prefer.
And that's easy to, that's very easy to change for for next month. What's the council's thought on the um, you know, like the 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 game day weekend? You know, uh, defining game day is, okay, it's, we're talking about football, and we'll address other things on a ad hoc basis when they come up by resolution. But but what the suggested change says is particularly related to that that camper issue is that you can you can park a camper and you can stay in it for a game day weekend, not just like game, not just game day, you know? So I guess, you know, that would mean, you know, and we can, you can put parameters on that. We've done that in another ordinance, like, you know, five you know, five PM, the day before the game, which I think is what you'd wanna say as opposed to Friday, because they're gonna probably start playing on Fridays sometime.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
But if you said five PM, for example, five PM, day before the game till noon, day after the game, call that a weekend. If that's, if that's something the council's very interested in, that would be another easy change to make.
So you said you can't park an RV on grass right now?
Correct.
Because the only thing you can park are cars on grass.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can't park a car, you can't park an RV on a on grass. Unless it's a game day.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So this, so RVs can park on the grass, just like cars can park on the
They can. I mean, it's, that's been true. Our 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 traffic ordinance prohibits parking on grass. Uh, parties, you know, uses the phrase motor vehicle and that's defined as that would include an RV. So that would be permitted presently, yeah, but only on
Well, I'm again, wouldn't wanna from this game day into game weekend, we've been through this in twenty eighteen, I think it was, when we talked about, oh gee, let people stay overnight. And then it's like, well, you're turning game day into something else then, you know? Weekend party central and you can say, oh, nobody would do that, or this would never happen, but look around town at things that were never gonna happen. you can say, oh, nobody would do that, or this would never happen, but look around town at things that were never gonna happen that we left to deal with. So I think, you know, we stipulate no living space in RVs, period.
Has there been, has there been? Is there been the issues that this has happened, that we're doing this? I mean, what, what's prompting or driving this this ordinance? If we have all these restrictions for, you know, certain days, but not on game days, what are we really gaining here? I mean, am I missing something here? Is is this a problem?
I don't think you're missing anything, and I don't know that it's been a huge problem on game days or game day weekends. But there have been some circumstances that have, that have arisen lately that frankly, don't have a whole lot to do with games or game days where uh, you know, it's, you know, I think there there's been a a test or there's gonna be a test of, you know, hey, can I just pull my camper up and live, live in my camper? And and our ordinance presently is pretty clear in saying no. And what this effort is is does is it makes it just crystal clear that you can't do that.
So this is just a preemptive measure then?
I think it, I think that's a fair comment. Uh, so then, as we, as we thought about it, as the staff sort of thought about, okay, if we're gonna look at this preemptive measure because of something that's come up, well, what else would we recommend to the council just more generally? You know, about um, about RV type uses, which led to the discussion of uh of game day. Um, and and that that's really where it came from, Doug.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any feelings about what Lisa's suggesting?
How often are people spending the night in in uh RVs? Do we ever use them to that?
Not within consistency. I don't, I can't, I would estimate three or two or nights a week.
Do you mean like on a game day or tons of people parking in RVs or parking RVs on properties and spending the night in them?
I can think of that it's occurred recently.
I guess, is that something councils have strong preference on? Whether that should be allowed or not?
Well, I know they do it over on the, in the Iowa City side in our
Yeah, there's.
in the lot over there. You see the RVs come in on Fridays afternoons and they're parked there.
Right, and that's what I don't wanna have in my neighborhood. That's kind of a point. I mean, what are we? Are we a residential nice city or are we a game day and any other event parking lot? I mean, I think people can make better arrangements than and and saying that when I get what you're asking or why you're asking the question, but if you put this in an ordinance and say, oh, yeah, you can do this now, well, that's a really good way to or again, some more business or I just wouldn't want to encourage that.
And it takes away from the hotel. Too. I'll just park them out.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's not it's not gonna hurt game day to not make these changes. And it's not gonna mean we don't support certain kinds of things. It means we're trying to protect our community and we're trying not to turn into something that.
Do they allow perking?
What they have at the university across the, right across Mel.
What did you say, Doug?
Obviously, do they allow perking up there in the old I-club parking lot overnight? Is Iowa City, because that's now Iowa City. I mean, isn't that kind of a visual? If you were coming in, would you wonder, is that Iowa City or is that University Heights or does it matter? Because we don't have jurisdiction on that.
They have to have, that's reserved parking for those specific. They paid the university or however they did it. You know, nobody can just drive up there and park. It's, well, you know how it is. The hotels are, I don't know, three hundred dollars a night, four hundred dollars a night, five hundred dollars a night. So, you know, or you have to go, you know, thirty, forty miles away to, I don't know, you know, I just know that everything's very expensive and those are reserved spots that are.
Wouldn't want somebody with a big yard saying, I'll charge ten dollars like university and you can park all your RVs here.
And don't think that that wouldn't happen, ladies.
You said, Steve, that it currently doesn't allows uh sleeping and occupying mobile home.
Like living in an RV.
So that's, that's not allowed now and this would allow for it.
Uh, it's not allowed, it's not allowed now. This would make it uh clearer that it's not allowed now. And the way it's written is presented, the exception is on like game day weekends.
I I think I'm sensing, I'm fine with it too, like striking the exception for in section six A, eight, striking except for campers and recreational vehicles on game day weekends.
That's what I, and I, I I would like to keep game day.
Just game day.
Yeah, game day and we can approve things without just anything that might come up in the future. We can do.
But those those changes are easily made and and if that's the consensus of the council, what I would suggest that you do is just make the motion to adopt ordinance two fifty five with the change that game day just means football games. And uh, that six eight A, the language that Nick pointed out, except for campers and recreational vehicles on game weekend, game day weekend is stricken. And then I'll just, I'll make that change for for the second consideration, but you're kind of adopting it for the first time tonight.
So moved?
I was gonna suggest just saying that. Okay, there's a motion by Nick and a second by Lisa. Uh, any further discussion by council? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oh, it's a roll call. This is, oh, this is first consideration.
Yeah.
This is a big deal, everybody. This is first consideration. Somehow I was thinking this was kind of a separate little island over here, but no, it's not. It's first consideration number two fifty five with those changes. Okay, um, roll call.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Okay. Then okay, this is first consideration. So it can be changed many times moving forward, or we might get more public input. See what people say. That would be good. If anybody has um, any question about it, please contact us. Uh, and then we have discussion of other zoning commission recommendations through the city council, and I think that's like the ADU.
I think that was the ADU.
Yeah, we kind of put that on hold a little bit, the accessory dwelling units to treat it separately. And has anybody had any time to get any more information or hear from anybody or?
I, I've met with some people, talked with some people. And I was at that zoning commission meeting when people raised objections. I heard what the MP of it said. I haven't heard any woman outside of some of the zoning commissioners that said, we should do this. People say it's, it it could work in Iowa City, but in our little bitty town we don't wanna make more rental opportunities. And uh, that's how I feel about it. I just think we ought to let it go. Because I think people can make changes to their properties without it. And I don't wanna see more rentals. And saying that we might pass it and see how it goes. Once somebody, once these things exist, they're not gonna go away. And again, Nick and I were on the council and we went through and talked about how we were going to try to regulate Airbnb's and make it better for university heights. And the legislature came along and said, you can't do that, can't limit your you know, your your rental things aren't gonna work, your Airbnb's, you can't regulate it all. I don't think it's just being too afraid to do something. I think it's, we've seen how this has happened in the past. And I would almost think it's more of a probability than a possibility. This could, all the little guardrails or safety rails would just be taken away.
I tend to agree. I think the zoning commission did a great job bringing us um a plan with guardrails that if we were, if there was a desire for more rentals, I think this would be the way to do it, because then you have the the owner living on site. So I think if we wanted more rentals, this would be a great way to have more better rentals. Um, I share the concern with Lisa that the guardrails will get stripped away by the state legislature. That's what we've seen in other contexts. Um, and so that's where I just, you know, again, if if there was a huge demand for more rentals, you know, maybe it'd be worth the risk, you know, in my opinion of of the legislature again saying, hey, you can't have those guardrails. But so that's, that's what I'd say too, to just kind of leave it for now, in my opinion.
Yes, I agree with that. The the issue here that might be a higher risk is that we're in such a desirable spot that people could buy up properties and start replicating these things and break the rules and could be a problem. As opposed to being a whole city where it's spread out, we're right here in a
Mm-hmm.
high-demand area.
Yeah, that's our size makes us pretty vulnerable.
Any, did you wanna say anything about ADUs, Doug? Have you had time to look at that?
Yeah, yeah, I've uh looked at it. I I've heard both sides from neighbors. I I hear some people say that it's a form of discrimination against what property owners can and cannot do with their their property. And then I also hear the concerns that Lisa and everybody has said too. So I'm hearing a fifty fifty balance from what I'm hearing locally. Uh, and again, maybe this is something that we should look at kind of in a not a discriminatory way, but at the discretion of the 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 council, you know, I'd say all properties are pretty landlocked, pretty tight. It's a I don't think it's a big issue. I I appreciate all the work that the zoning commission has done. They've done a great job. And I understand the concern and looking to the future too as well. Um, but it does kind of, just goes to show you that even like affordable housing, it's just, it just doesn't work in university heights for the, you know, conditions that we have for, you know, our city being so small and so tight that it doesn't really open up the door to anything affordable down the road for anybody. So that kind of throws that out the window too. So I apologize, I'm sounding like I'm talking out both sides of my mouth here, but I I do concerns, and I do like to see property values grow up, because that's more money for the city, you know, that we can certainly use at at any given time. So um I I think as long as we we move forward and and just use some just common sense and knowledge that, you know, there's certain areas of town, there's just no way you could even entertain that that thought. And then there's some over here on the west side that maybe have a little more space, but you know, they would like to have a a shed of some kind or something, but as far as living in it, yeah, I'm kind of up in the air on that myself. So I need to kick that can down the road and roll that around a little bit more before I could get behind it at this time.
Okay. Any other comments? Um. I think council wants to get more input on it. I mean, I know you you want to, Doug, and oh, did you wanna speak? Oh, I don't know. What what are they pointing? You're pointing.
Yeah, I can reiterate the discussion that we had and why we came to this, if that would be helpful. Um, cuz it wasn't about creating more rentals. This was not about that we were there to stand for rentals. This was for the city council came to us two years ago.
Pete, can you come up to the
Sure.
lecture? Thank you.
Yeah, this again, this wasn't an issue that was driven by the zoning commission. This was the city council came to us and asked us to look into this two years ago. And there were people that wanted to have additional support in their home, either because they wanted to age in place or they were a young family and wanted to have a little bit more rental income, but they were living on site because it was getting so expensive to be able to live here. And so that's how we started looking into this and looking into what was the evidence of what was going on. So again, this, there was nothing, the zoning commission was not trying to drive an issue. We were trying to respond to an issue that the city council had raised to us. And so though that was the the reason, the perspective on where we were coming from and why we did it in the way we did it. And we're advised, we took the city council, so that's up to you all to make the decision, but that's what, that's where we were coming from. Uh, and then we had talked about the issue of some sort of a variance. And according to Mr. Ballard, that is not something that a variance can be given for. So it's not like we can do a one-off. In this case, it kind of makes sense and they can go to the board of adjustment that can get a variance. It doesn't work that. So it would be something, you know, again, and I think, you know, as we thought about it, there, as you're saying, a lot of places, it's not even an option that this could even be possible in most of university heights. So it's only a small portion. Then in in those places, the likelihood that anything, just like we've heard in Iowa City, yes, maybe we're a little bit more desirable, but it's still, there are a lot of factors that make it why no one would want to do this. And again, it's not like if we get, I'm not, I don't wanna try to over advocate, cuz that's not the role of the zoning commission. Our job was to look into it, provide the evidence and bring it back to you to decide. But if there, um, that that's where we were coming from.
Thanks, Pete, for explaining that.
I don't know, are there any questions that I can respond to for any things that we had looked into? Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Steve, I have a quick question for you. Um, so it seems like there are some houses where without being, having an ADU, they might, you know, want some more living space above a garage or, you know. I mean, I think we've already allowed the, just with the first, you know, vote on that, you know, allowing the house to be extended back would seem to be a way to allow growing families or someone taking in another generation or something to add on. Um, do you see any other changes that would help? Understanding that doesn't seem like we wanna generate the rental possibility, but just to allow people to add living space? You, have you, in your experience, run into obstacles that, I I mean, I know they can go ask for a variance, but is there anything written in the law that would help people maybe expand in their living space that we haven't already addressed?
Well, I mean, one thing that comes to mind, but I don't know that it really, I mean, I can answer your question in one way, but I don't think it's really been the driver of any of this discussion. So we do have a, we have a a a lot coverage, you know, restriction. You know, if your, if your lot is this size, you know, you can't, you can't, you know, build a house on everything but this part, you know, even if you have setbacks, there's still a restriction. So you could say, well, you can build, you can add more on. Um, I don't, I don't know. I guess I would have to ask Terry, but I don't think that that's come up as an issue where people are saying, gosh, you know, I wanna put this addition on, but you're telling me I'm taking up too much of my lot. But that would be just to answer your question, that would be one way.
What about height-wise? Are we running into anybody who's not allowed to build up as much as they would want?
We did have, the 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 board of adjustment did have a uh, an issue with somebody who wanted to add on. And it didn't height, it was gonna violate the height restriction and and the board of adjustment said, we don't have any, we don't really have any permission or we don't have any power to let you do that. So that came up at least once. Um, the, it, there hasn't really been a um I don't think there's been a bunch of a discussion point of, you know, hey, we we like to use, you know, sometimes they call it a bonus room or there's some other acronym, ROFR or whatever, what is it? Room above garage, they can't do it. Or there's some other acronym, R O F E R, or whatever, is it room above garage, they can't do it, anyway. But like, you know, it's, it, it, this is our garage and if we don't wanna rent it, we don't wanna have it be for our mother-in-law. We just wanna finish it off and maybe make it a kid cave or whatever it might be. Um, and our ordinance says you can't have, you know, a garage, detached garage, that would be, you know, accessory space. Uh, or sorry, accessory of structure, you can't have any living space, so, I mean, I could see, uh, so, so. If it's a detached garage, that's different, you know, you could, you could finish space like that, um, if it was a detached garage, I mean, I could see that as being. Uh, you know, uh, a situation that the council might consider to answer your questions or wait to, to do more living space. I, I think you're gonna, I think it's a pretty slippery slope, cause you're gonna, you know, then you're gonna be policing, well, who, who is living there and. And you know, is it really just the kids or is it, is it, you know, your nephew who's going to college and, you know, that sort of thing, so. Those are the things I guess that immediately come to my mind, man.
That's helpful, I appreciate that.
So, um. Do we wanna talk about this next month too? Or. You know. Doug, what would you like to do? You wanna talk about it some more next month?
Oh, oh yeah, I'd like to uh hash it to death and, and uh, at least say we gave it a fair shot or we, we shot it down properly and. Um, you know, just, we just need to look at all scenarios, I guess, but uh, yeah, I, I'd be for. Like I say, revisiting that a little longer.
Is that okay with the council?
Yeah, there were people that talked about it at the public input in that May meeting where they wanted some. Uh, you know, like, they could uh stay there longer or have their parents or their family move there. There was a little bit of interest there.
Right, I, I actually have a mother and father-in-law right now that are in uh declined, uh, you know, cognitively, so. You know, nursing homes get eight to ten to twelve thousand dollars a month and uh, that's a lot of money going out the window, so I think anything. That a, a, a family can do to provide care, you know, for, you know, somebody who's got Alzheimer's dementia. I, I see no harm in that at all, I mean, it's not like we're building frat houses in our backyard, I mean, if you do it responsibly, I, I see no issue. At all with allowing this to take place.
You guys, that, that's a maybe a question I have, so my understanding was this wouldn't. Prevent you from, i- it's not helping or hurting in terms of building on. Like the additional space for like a family member, right? To live in.
Addition, um.
Like this is all about getting a rent, like having space that would be eligible for a rental permit.
Well, it's about building, um, it's about allowing livable space in an accessory uh structure. Okay.
And so what we were talking about, like building above the garage, for example.
If the garage is attached, I mean, that's a big distinction.
Yeah, but so this would be, I thought at one point we talked about how this. So, but you could add on, you could finish a kitchen in your basement, you could do a lot, unless it's in a separate building, you could do all of that already.
You, you can, what our ordinance says is that you have to, like, the home has to be occupied as a single housekeeping unit. So you can't put a wall down it, down the middle of your home or any place in your home and say, well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have a duplex. You, you know, you can't do that, nor could you add on and then say, well, we're gonna have a separate stairwell up to that, you know, and have a. And have a, a separate dwelling, so that's part of what the ADU, you know, was, was looking at, was, you know, is there a way for us to do that?
So I guess two things, well. I do have on my block a couple of houses that are in, whatever the word is that we use these days besides.
Duplex.
That are.
Yeah, they're duplex.
Single family homes that they were allowed to do something like this and that was. My aging father, and now that's, there's two apartments and, and the same thing, I wanna do something for my son. And now it's two rentals and you, you do notice them when you live in a little bitty. Squishy duck neighborhood, I do notice them, but then, my question for you, Steve, is. Do we allow, what, what is the, what do we allow people to, you know, have, who do we allow people to have move in? To their. Um, home, like, we talked before about, I remember sisters, we talked about parents or. I, I just don't remember what we ended up with in the.
Yeah, we don't have much to restrict who can occupy. In that sense, because when the legislature said you can't do this by familial status, right? What we do, what we have, which is not really what you ask, but it's kinda what we're left with, is, is uh building and housing code squared footage. Um, uh, you know, uh, regulations, um, and we also have the, the, the single housekeeping unit. You know, uh, restriction, so, well, you know, this is my, my brother, my friend or whatever, well, why are you really, you know. If, 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 if somebody, if you want that guy to live in your bedroom, God bless you, you know, if you're renting it to him, you know, then, then you need a rental for that. And then that involves those sorts of things, but.
Yeah, I just, cause I, I hear what Doug's saying in terms of, you know. He had a family member that he wanted to, you know, move in to help care for them, but I, you know, that would be something that.
But we can do that.
Yeah, it sounds, I just wanna make sure there was something that was stopping that, but I hear that you couldn't do like. A formal barrier of like two units, um, but they could be in a finished basement with a. Kitchenette and bathroom and stuff, just couldn't be like a separate entryway, if my understanding.
Well.
Do we.
We can discuss.
Wanna keep talking about ADU or do we have a.
Yeah, exactly.
Consensus on this and start looking at something else, I mean, what do you? I don't have.
I don't plan to do anything more, um, on ADUs myself, I mean, I can have taught. People as much as I, I wanted.
It can be readdressed at another time.
Someone raised it, I guess, in the future. It's good to have, you know, have a plan there in case there is change in circumstances, maybe that makes it make more sense.
Does that sound reasonable, that just address it at another time if somebody. Is interested, is that okay with you, Doug? Okay.
Absolutely, I'm good with that, yes.
Okay, maybe, maybe we'll hear from the, from somebody from the public. Too about it. So that's what we'll do, we'll, uh. We'll quit talking about it now, ADUs, right now, we'll table it until a later time or. When someone makes a request or things change. Um, so, is that everything under, did you have something under your committee report?
No.
No, nothing new, okay, and then we'll go to uh the police chief report. Hey, chief, how are you doing?
Hi, everybody got to see the report, um. Public thank you stepping on, uh, for helping us go through and interview people for the last two weeks. Um, for the, the open session we have, so thank you very much.
Fun.
Very helpful, and it's good to have somebody from the council involved, that gives us a little bit of perspective, Darryl, and I know what we're looking for. But you see things differently than we do, so thank you very much. Uh, we continue to support the U of I with the football, um, last couple of games, we've sent several people over there. Um.
Questions, maybe a question for you and maybe for Steve or John, I don't know, but we've been working on the door a lot. Um, trying to find someone who will work on it, and I think we're, I think the next step is. Like an ATAC sort of company that's probably gonna be pretty expensive, and I don't know what kind of money we have.
Well, I've been, Troy and I have been working on it.
Oh, good.
And. Actually, Mark Phelps also helped, who does our snow removal, and he does a lot of management of buildings downtown. And so, you know, how we kinda went through the process where. We were working on it real hard, we got quotes so that we're updated and people are recommending either. GO key or millennium, and w- we spent a lot of time working on it and getting bids and. We wanna make sure what we put in there works and not just put a handle on it, you know what I mean? That we have the system where you can click and then the doors close and lock. And we wanna be updated, and what I was told back then was, it's gonna be thirty eight hundred dollars and you have old. Equipment, you have outdated, you know, but we can fix it and we can make it all work for that, and for about ten thousand. We can do the whole thing right and we'll be on, you know what I mean, and so. Uh, I think with this local option sales tax, we can go and do the system right from the beginning. And so, I had been working the last couple of weeks trying to re-get a hold of the person, and it's kind of from. Bill's uh Freeman lock, but now it's a more sophisticated computerized thing and not just Freeman lock and key, you know. And so, what had slowed it down was, we were waiting for the FEMA money. And then it was like, oh, it's gonna come in for sure, and then it's like, uh, no, they turned it down, okay, so I've been on FEMA. I've been on emergency management, not on FEMA, and saying, we gotta get this going, and they said, oh, we're reapplying. And then I just, every week I'd call and say, well, what happened, what happened, well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, and then we were also looking at insurance. And so now FEMA's out, you know, FEMA's out for sure, and, you know, and all this happened and Troy was retired. And all of that happened, and so. I think we already did a lot of this work and I just think we oughta do it right. And use one of these systems that Iowa City Police use, downtown Iowa City uses, you know what I mean, and do it right. And I was trying to get it ready for today's meeting, but I couldn't get it ready. I, they've not been coming. I don't know if it's a busy time of year or what, but they haven't come, but I do have the. Uh. The, it estimates from February, but they're only good for thirty days. But, you know, so I wanted to get that all together, but I haven't. And, but we, we've done a lot of work on it and we wanted to present something, and I think now we can afford the. Ten thousand dollars to do it right, and not the thirty eight hundred to have old technology. And then we also need to fix this door, because you know, that's, you made it so you don't use it, and that price was in there. You know what I mean, to lock it like, yeah, this middle door.
Pass-through door, that bans you just holds it open for convenience, that's all, we can take it off and it works just fine.
I understand, but nobody wants to take it off, so why are we keying it?
Oh, gotcha, okay, alright.
I mean, yeah, I totally get it, I don't wanna keep a little rubber band on there and, you know, I wanna repair things right. And one time, and so. That's kinda what happened with it, it, you know what I mean, we wanna get it fixed, but then Troy was gonna come back, you know what, in. August and then in September and then in October, you know, and just, you know.
I guess I wasn't aware.
And, and then I was waiting for lost, too, to see how that came out. Because, you know, it's a significant amount of money, but I wanna get it fixed right. That's kind of my goal, and then I was gonna present something, but I have nothing to present, so.
In the short term, can that, can anything from there go over to there, or is that not, if you don't use that lock, that would just be moved along? The, uh, your, your.
Yeah.
The way, yeah, the way I got involved was just, I have a really good door guy for my commercial space and he was here, just said, you should talk to this guy and. He, he thought there was potential um to do it pretty efficiently, but then decided.
Well, we'll get ahold of that guy too.
Well, he was saying ATAC, but. Because of the computer side of, of things, just wanna make sure it's done.
Well. But we spent a significant, you know, when I came back, when I was appointed as mayor, I came into here and I go, well, this is wrong. And this is wrong and this is wrong, you know, so I was working on fixing it, and so the door was always left open, do you remember that first year, the door? Was always left open, the council, you know what I mean, it didn't work right, and I said, we gotta get a system that it's gonna lock, somebody's gonna come in here. And who knows what, you know, figuring out, oh, these doors are unlocked. So, it's just that the council or whoever was in here just didn't check the door behind them and didn't know they had to lock, you know, the system was kind of bad. To begin with, and so I had Tri-City Electric who put in the electric. Do this system so we can unlock and lock, well, this will do for everything. You know, this millennium or GO key will do for everything, and we can get ahold of this guy too. But I just wanna make sure it's done right and we don't just fix this temporarily and then it's like never, that door needs to be fixed, meaning. Don't put whatever's there on there now, we, we gotta use it how we need to use it correctly. And that was the whole idea to fix things right, and then we got stalled with FEMA money with, you know what I mean, it, it just. And we couldn't go ahead with it, because, and then we didn't, and then, you know, then the budget, budget was not good. So I, you know, so that's my problem, I would've gotten it repaired if I, you know, and the, and brought it to the council. So I just like to try to work on it a little more.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Cause we spent a lot of time working on it and had all the estimates in February and waiting for FEMA money. That never came, if that makes any sense, I just wanna do it once and do it right. And, and then the council can decide how to fix it, you know, which choice. Okay, does that help?
Yeah.
But I'm glad you have somebody, cause we were checking into everything.
Hey, Louise?
Yeah.
Uh, we, I can get, I can get Tri-City, that's who we use over at the hospital and all our projects and the.
Yeah, I know, I don't need Tri.
Bad readers and stuff.
But I don't need them, they won't do, they don't do the, this. They just did the electric call for, I know, but Tri-City did all of O U P, so that's why I called them. And then they wanted eleven hundred dollars to fix it and I talked them down to eight fifty, so.
Are you talking city, are you saying?
Tri-City Electric.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, they did all this and I said, well, if you did all this electricity, this should be easy for you, you don't need this, you don't need that. Are just eleven hundred dollars. So they lowered the price, so anyway, yeah, I know about, yeah, but that's the electrical. We need the lock and the, in the computer kinda stuff. That's why I gotta bring in people who know about that too, around me, and Mark Phelps will help us with it again, he's. He was, he could get them to come here, for some reason, I can't get him to come here. I'm having trouble, but anyway, you know, I can bother them. And then I'll get them, but anyway, yeah, no, Tri-City will come for us. They'll, they'll come with a phone call, they'll come, they've been good. But yeah, if we have a connection, that always works too, but anyway.
I, I twisted, I, I twisted her arm at the hospital, like, they, they'll move.
So yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, well then, you'd be a good one there, but I don't think I need them for this. I just needed, yeah, I just needed to fix that one problem, so I'm hoping to fix it.
I'll reach out to the.
And I, yeah, yeah, you're gonna talk to him?
Yep.
What time are they coming?
I haven't even spoken to him.
Oh, okay.
I'll reach out to him tomorrow morning and see what interest they have.
Okay, very good. Perfect. Oh, thank you, okay, yeah. Just all these things happen, we didn't have the money, is mostly it, but anyway, I hope that kinda helps. I really am trying to fix this problem. But, now. Uh, so he says you're interviewing some police officers, so you're gonna have something maybe by November or?
We are hoping. By the end of October.
Oh. I see. That's great.
We got one candidate involved.
Well, I'm glad you have multiple candidates.
Get a background check.
Yeah, that's great. That's good to hear. Thank you. Any questions for chief? Thank you. Do you have anything out to add, Steph? Okay, so we'll go on to streets and sidewalks. Welcome back from Ireland. You know, he's been in Ireland. On a family vacation.
Uh, I, I don't have a whole lot to add to my report. I just wanted to note in case, it was pretty brief. But in case anybody didn't get a chance to read it, uh. We did have just a note on the warrants list that there was a payment for the pavement marking project, which is the release of retainage. Five percent retainage for the work that was already performed and completed. So. That wraps up that project. So that was for $522.25. It's already approved on the warrants list, but just so council's aware, payments in there.
The markings look good and. Yeah.
Yeah.
Did a nice job with that. Thank you.
Other than that, I don't have anything really to add to my report tonight.
Okay.
One thing I was going to bring up, totally forgot the last month. We had talked a little bit after that meeting about kind of the sidewalk program. It sounds like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is. Like, it sounds like it might be kind of efficient, just if we were, if council did decide that we're going to fix sidewalks. Um, and Ryan, if you don't mind explaining, explain to me a little more detail. The administrative costs of like going and identifying the sidewalk pieces that need to be fixed. Might, in a sense, in our city, our size. Um, be greater than the actual cost to fix the sidewalks. Did I get that right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so it's, it might not necessarily be greater, but it could be close. It could be a high percentage of what the costs are. That the, when you, uh, get reimbursed. Or invoice the residents for the work that's performed. So like the, and, um, it. And that's sort of what I mentioned that during the last meeting was. To have the, at least engineering staff, professional staff hired to do the inspection work and, um, you know, the. Admin work of putting together the letters. First surf, you got to send certified letters. If people don't pick them up from the post office, they have to be resent. Uh, so there's a lot of time consuming. Paperwork essentially involved with that, that can be costly. To a city this size, yeah, uh, to administer that program through. The, the engineering staff, I guess, really. So. So, yeah, that was what we talked about is sort of potentially where once, uh, there is a city administrator, you know, hired, um, I think that was mentioned at the last meeting. By Mayor Fromm that, you know, maybe that's something. If the city moves forward that way, that would be administered internally by the city or, and we could maybe provide assistance on just the inspection criteria then or. Even maybe just do the inspection part, walk around and then. Hand over the reports and then all the remaining work is maybe done through city, city staff directly, but. Uh, yeah, that's, it's, there's kind of a balance there. I don't have like a. Hundred percent, it's going to cost you.
Yeah.
10,000 for us to, to just do the work to administer it. And it's basically a 12,000 dollar project that the city gets money back. But. You know, that's kind of. There's, there's a lot of factors into like sort of how you want. To, to review, yeah.
I appreciate that. I just knew we were looking at maybe a program. I think council is going to maybe think about that. And that to me, maybe this might have been said at the meeting and I didn't quite. Track it fully until afterward, but that, that was definitely something that made me think maybe the scales were tipped the other way. If we, you know, if we did want to. Budget in just fixing the sidewalks and a certain, with a certain program as opposed to. Administering a program to, um, have property owners pay for it, but I think it would involve. You know, I, I think there was a discussion at the last meeting maybe about, you know, people abuse their sidewalks in some way, then. That wouldn't be what, you know, we'd want to, um, pay for. And maybe that's something that. We can enforce in a, a separate way, you know, if it's, if it's damaged, but that if it's just. Freezing gone, whatever, that it's, you know, tree, tree roots is something that maybe we'd ever develop a program so we don't have to worry about. You know, um, the asphalt fix or whatever, the grinding fix and just kind of get that program going like the next spring or something.
Yeah, I mean, and since that, it brought that up in, to be clear, uh, we're, I'm not doing anything. This month with that, um, until I have further direction from council, I guess. Um, so I just want to make sure that's clear for everyone. I did send. Um, I had Emily, um. In our office, put together the list of sort of like the, the one inch plus, uh, trip hazards that we had talked about at the last meeting is like, hey, these would be my higher concerns, right? That you would want to. Potentially address sooner, um. Than getting down to like the three quarter inch, the, the program used to use for that trip hazard. Standard, um. And so we sent photos, I know the lists of the addresses to Mayor Fromm and, and Doug.
Okay.
Just so they have that information if they wanted to, you know, contact folks and just see if they were interested in. Doing anything or take a look for themselves on those areas and maybe get a sense of. How they feel about. What those areas look like, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate you explaining.
Any other questions? Doug, did you have anything to add? Okay. I know you were working on some tree trimming and things and I'm sure, is that still going on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, we do have the e-government report. Which I think is a. I like that Halloween is there in like the. Leaf vacuuming days for sure are there. That's what we're thinking about now. Lisa, would you want to just go through some of those just? Just for the public?
Sure, and Mike can make these announcements in the minutes. Uh, so Halloween is Thursday, October 31st. That's trick or treat. 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Which I still think it's too long, but. My kidneys gone way before them. Leaf vacuuming. Need to have your leaves ready on Monday morning because when you see the truck go by your street, it's too late. So Monday, October 28th is round one. November 18th is round two. And just to keep everybody on your toes. Johnson County Refuge LRS says that Veterans Day, which is a federal holiday, is not going to affect. Herb site collection, so. Tuesday, November 12th is when that will be picked up. As usual.
Yeah, thanks for getting all that on the website very efficiently and everything. Yeah, so. Is there any questions for Lisa? No. Okay, is there any, uh, objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.